Are we good, Joe? All right. All right, we can go ahead and call me into order. Mr. Plakow, if you can call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden.
Here.
Jack Miley.
Here.
Belinda Grassi.
Here.
Tom Hegg.
Here.
And Steve Jeffries is absent.
All right. We can all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, I would like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I would like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. First up, we've got the approval of the January 29th Board Meeting Minutes and the February 4th Special Meeting. If I could have a second, please. I'll stick it. Anything, Mrs. Grassi? Is there any discussion? Yeah? And call well, please.
Jack Miley.
Aye.
Belinda Grassi.
Aye.
Tom Hegg.
Aye.
Jennifer Harden.
Aye. Motion carried. And that takes us to Special Reports.
We do. We have our monthly report from Chris from Icon. And I also talked to Dave Ward, our new AD, about coming in and giving us an update on the athletic department. And we're planning on doing that in the March meeting.
Great.
A lot of good things happening in athletics as well. And Swimmers did really well. Had some milestones in terms of basketball. And he's going to come in and update the board. But for right now, we have Chris here. He can give the update, and then we'll cut you loose.
Sure. Last time in January, the big thing was we were getting the Joyce and Roof Decking on Area 8. We finally got that done. It weighed about three, four weeks until it got us because of the weather. That's done. Roof is on. Area 8 Concord Drive, the roof will be done at Madison next week. But Joyce and decking, so that was a hurdle for us to get over. That didn't help us with that three weeks, but we'll recover from that. Things are, it's good news to finally have the entire building, roof on each building is enclosed, no water coming in, and we'll move along. All our infrastructure's in place. We're just about done with all our infrastructure. That's all the overhead piping, ductwork, conduit on the first floor. We're closing in on that. We're moving up, staging up on the second floor now. Next few weeks, we'll be done with that, and we're moving along. We're going to start, not this weekend, next weekend, we'll be going back to weekend work to try to make up time that we lost with the past several weeks with the weather and that. So we're shooting for that, this school. But everything's working well. We're staying out of the site. It's been a struggle out there with the cold and the warm and that. The sites are just falling apart, so we haven't been doing much outside. We started veneer on both buildings. You know, Jim was out there. You can kind of see what it's going to look like, the exteriors of your buildings now.
I have a picture for the part.
Great.
And we finally got our windows ordered, too. We got cut loose with the glazing, and we're moving along.
Great.
Good. Yeah. So just, we had a billions of grounds meeting, I guess, last week. And so we did spend a fair amount of time on the windows. And as I understand from that conversation, the, you know, the windows are basically now on a critical path, or they were near a critical path last week.
Well, the windows, as of right now, they're not on a critical path. They will be at some point. There's about, right before we ordered them, and I have not spoke with my glazing subcontractor for several days now, but I will touch base with them this week, we were looking at 14-week lead time, which puts us into June, which means I'm doing finishes and that. Without windows, I can't fire up the permanent HVAC system. Hopefully, now that we're on the schedule, and that's the thought, that lead time will improve, because now we're in the queue.
So this, so everything has been settled in terms of lead certification, UV rating, insulation properties, and everything?
Well, as, to the best we could do it as per our meeting. It's not as, it's not equal to what we had, but we met what we needed to meet.
Because after I sent that email to Fannie and Howie about, we need to go, we need to get moving on this, again, I didn't receive an email.
Neither did I.
But I did talk to Tracy, and I believe Tracy received a response, which I don't understand. Again, if I'm sending an email, I don't know why I'm not copying on the response from Fannie and Howie, but so is the tradition of our relationship with Fannie and Howie, which disappoints me. But as long as you or Tracy get a response, I would really like to know.
I haven't seen anything, so I'm waiting for, like I said, I asked for a PR, a proposal request from them memorializing this. Although we have everything for the windows in place, there's some incidentals that have to happen that we need Fannie and Howie to memorialize. And I haven't seen that. That's not holding up our windows or anything. Then, when, once we get the glazing to put in the frames that are in masonry walls and stuff, that's when we'll need to have that ironed out. But as soon as I see something, and I'll talk to Tracy tomorrow, maybe she can form with me the email that she received. But honestly, I'm beyond going back and forth on that.
Right. She said she would send it to me as well, but I haven't checked my emails since I spoke to her, and that was maybe around 3:30, 4 o'clock today.
I will give her a call early in the morning and see if I can get that. I will get that.
Okay.
So just, so I understand. And I appreciate, I know we're jumping through hoops and that we're, we don't necessarily have a full team effort on this, and it's been delayed. But in the, my understanding was that there are limited finishing things that can be done. Maybe painting was pretty much it, but we can't put, there seem to be some limits as to what we can do in the actual classroom spaces or other spaces without the permanent windows in place. Can you address my confusion or my understanding?
Yes, as far as, I can get, I can get painting done, I can get grid in place, I can get light fixtures hung. I would not want to, I'd be selective where I would do flooring, for fear that if it was by an area that I have temp in, an exterior window or something, that weather could get in there. So in that respect, and then there's, there would be concerns with temperature and humidity sense of items, like a casework over doors. It's amazing how quickly the casework could go. And wood gymnasium floor, that's very sensitive to humidity and temperature. So in that respect, it could, I, I'm not going to lie to you, it could have issues, but we're not there yet, so I can't, I'm not going to say we're going.
Sure. I just, you know, I just trying to understand what's in place. And I know you've been down this road many times. This is all new for us. So just trying to make sure we have realistic understandings, because you can only do what you can do, right? You can't?
Like with the gymnasium, the windows, the openings up there are not windows like you would have here. That's cow wall, that's a translucent pan. That's something totally different. We can get that in place. The doors that are in there, and you'll have to forgive me if they have lights on them, I can put something in there. We could try to seal that area off, but I can't condition the space without firing up the permanent system.
To understand, this is, things are out of your control, and the only thing you can do is, once they get under your control, is play them out as they have, you know, been up for you.
Yeah.
So my, how long will it take to install the windows? So we get, say we get them all in mid-June, I don't know exactly when, but we get them mid-June, is it a three-week process?
I would get every bit of three weeks, I would say.
Okay.
That's every opening in the building.
Okay. And so, and I know you prioritize, and you can start work in the spaces that are done, so it's not like you have to wait till they're all done to start. But, you know, we're not going to be all sealed in until, you know, sometime in July is what it sounds like, assuming everything comes into play. Maybe end of June, maybe, maybe July. And just, and we're looking to start school in September. So there's just a lot.
That's, it's, I'm just letting you know with that, that's a possibility. We're not there yet. I need to find out, hey, you know, I could find out, hey, you know, that lead time went for 14-week weeks, because we're in a queue. And I should be able to find that out today. But it's just letting you know that, you know, that there's a possibility, from the day we ordered, it's 14 weeks.
Okay. I understand. I'm not trying to give you any more ulcers.
No.
Again, just trying to make sure that we have a realistic understanding, and that is, as things change and improve, then we will, we will sweat less. And if things don't improve, then we might sweat more.
And now you know what keeps me up at night.
Yes. Yep. I wasn't even going to ask the question, because I kind of figured that might be the case, so.
Tom Hegg keeps you up at night.
No, I just want a good witty response one of these days.
Right.
In fact, we're moving along, like I said, and we're going to go back to the weekend work, make up as much time as we can and move along. And hopefully, this weather changes, and I can start on the outside with the site work as much as I can. You'll see the veneer going up a lot faster, too. That goes fairly quickly. Right now, what you see is all been tented, for the most part, and that's kind of slow.
Steve, did they straighten that? Has it occurred to you?
I did not check and see, but it was, I spoke with their office, it'll be straightened.
Thank you. Jack, did you have anything?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Safe drive.
All right. That takes us to old business, if anybody has anything. New business? I had one thing, I spoke to Dan McIntyre yesterday, or it's not yesterday, yeah, maybe, whatever, regardless. He wanted to have us, there's some ethics update training that he wants everyone to take part in, including our administration. So we were looking at, he said it shouldn't take more than an hour, trying to do it before a board meeting, from like 6 to 7. People would be willing to do that at either March 19th meeting or the, oh, goodness, my calendar is ridiculous. April, when is our meeting in April? Good lord. April 29th meeting. Does anyone have, opposed to having it at 6:00 PM on the 19th of March?
I have no preference.
For the day of our board meeting?
Whatever. Good with me. I'm getting ready to send myself an email, so I don't mind my calendar.
I don't know how imperative it is that I attend that, not that I'm opposed to it, but I'll be in Columbus the 18th and the 19th, and I don't know if I'll be back in time.
Okay.
To go to, to attend the meeting that night.
Sorry, is this for the board, or is this for both?
Both.
Both, okay.
Yeah.
That'll be good.
Chuck.
I'm here.
I'm fairly at the point.
March 19th at 6.
What's that? March 19th?
Apparently.
Speak fast.
March 19th at 6, is what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe you could just record.
I will.
I could listen to you.
He always says handouts and such. We'll get you those.
That would be perfect. I love a nice handout.
There you go. All right. Thank you all. And we'll let Steve know. Okay. That's all your new business. Anybody else?
Yes, we were going to have some discussion about the architects for the second phase of our project. I know there was some discussion already among a few of us about the responsiveness of the current architectural company we believe we might want to use for pre-bond services. I thought we could talk about it before we get too far into the project, about as to whether or not we would like to continue their service or look elsewhere.
So I am, I guess I'm just a little disappointed in their response time with getting us a contract. I questioned when we had, when we did our initial approval, when we did our initial ranking, and the rankings for me were very, very close and very similar, and if it had been me, it was like two ones and a three. So when we did our ranking and I asked how long it would take to get a contract from them, it was a couple, you know, it should, a week, whatever. It's a pretty standard contract for pre-bond services. And we didn't have one at our last work session, which I had anticipated we would have one, and then we didn't have it then, and we don't have one again this evening. I just want, I want to be clear on whether or not their responsiveness is something that I feel comfortable with. I would think that a company that is looking to provide that level of service to us would be Johnny-on-the-spot and getting that regardless, whether or not we have asked for them to be urgent with it or not. It just, it just gives me pause, and I was concerned about that, because we don't have one on the agenda tonight either, and that, to me, just says something. I'm not, I'm not sure, I'm not sure what to do with that.
I know, when I saw the Friday package, I said we hadn't received our response, that was because of a discussion that I had with Gary. I know that Mr. Riley did receive an email shortly after our meeting on Tuesday, correct? And he has a draft of a proposal now. I didn't feel comfortable putting it on the board agenda, because I didn't think it was fair to the board to vote on something they hadn't seen. You know, I know that in the past, the board always wants to be able to see something, review it before. My suggestion was to, you know, have it on the March meeting, but because of some of these concerns, I thought we might be able to at least talk about it at the table and decide whether or not we want to continue to go with that architectural company or if we want to look elsewhere. It's my, my belief that the board wants to put something up in terms of a proposal before the next meeting anyway, right? You don't want to wait till March 19th. If that, this company puts together a timeline, there might be a possibility that we would like to continue with them, so long as it's very clear that they follow that timeline and that they are responsive. I know not everyone's on the same page in terms of that being the only remedy, but we have to move ahead with one company or another soon, if there's even any discussion about placing it on the November ballot.
And again, for me, I just felt like if, if I was, if I was a company and I was eager to work with the district and we had won a contract, we would have had that contract within three days. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
I just, I just feel like whether or not we ask them to be urgent with the contract or whether, it doesn't matter. If I'm the company that has won the bid, I would have that out to them, to let the board know that I value what, what, what they even trust us with. So I'm not feeling that level of comfort with them right now, and, and I'm not, like, it's giving me, it's giving me great angst.
I know that you might not want to wait, but consider that in four weeks or so, maybe, I don't know if the board thinks that's enough time to have them show us that they can do it, they can put together a timeline, they can get after it. I mean, they've been working with us without the proposal at all for pre-bond type of services. I think I sent something to the board about what they're proposing, that if they do our work and we end up working with them, there's no cost. It's if they're working with us, and then we decide to go to another architectural company, then it will cost $40,000. But we haven't signed anything.
We haven't signed anything yet. So for me, that's, it's almost like if that's a non-issue. Again, I just, I just feel like the company should have been a little bit more responsive. I, I question that, and I feel like the other company that we had really thought was another number-one choice would have been a little bit more eager to get us that information. And, you know, I know that it was a matter of distance, and, you know, there were a lot of extenuating circumstances. Where one was good, I think the other had, had, like, maybe that was a concern. Where the other one was good, maybe we had concern over here. So to me, it was like an equal, it was an equal thing, and I'm just, I'm struggling with that. I'm really, really struggling with it right now.
I know the board's, and I am, too, very interested in what, you know, we need to have a good response. We've had trouble with our
Right.
last project here in terms of responsiveness. I thought that with a company that's located in Willoughby, that there'd be a lot more ability to talk, have discussions about issues and everything else than a company coming from Canton, which is a couple hours away. I do believe that in the presentation, you're right. I think the smaller firm was a little bit more eager. And I think my, my point was that I think the district would be doing more for them than they would be for us. I don't think they've done anything really in northeast Ohio in terms of projects, it's more down by Canton. And TDA is the larger firm. They've done a lot of work out here with a lot of other school districts in the area. But since this is a project that could be
It could be a game changer.
$80 million or more, then we need to feel comfortable with them. But we have to make a decision sometime real soon if we want to move ahead with them. I wouldn't want the company to do any more work if it's not the company we want to.
So I just wanted, I just wanted, and I kind of asked for this conversation at the board table, I did, and I wanted to make sure the rest of the board members are comfortable with the decision before we actually make one.
Yeah. And I mean, I had responded to Jim's email last week, and it's from, responding just to you, when they had not yet given a proposal, and my disappointment in that immediately. And I mean, you guys know my feeling, and I didn't want, I wasn't a fan of bringing TDA on board to begin with, so this, to me, makes it just that much worse. I mean, we've dealt with a lot of issues with our current architect, and to me, this just is a warning sign. And I think sometimes we need to listen to our intuition and say like, well, maybe then, then this is not, this is not the group that we should be using. I don't think that Canton being a hour away should, is a roadblock to someone being good. I mean, we chose Fannie and Howie, knowing they were much farther away. That certainly, that is not going well, but.
Right. I don't think anything, I don't think, you know, there's one bad thing about either, either firm's, you know, experience or what they've done, or what they haven't done, or whatever. I just feel like the response to this district for a project of this size should have been a little bit faster, and if that's what we're going to get from the very get-go, I
I guess the question we need to ask ourselves, are we, are we set on going in another direction, or is there something that TDA can do from now until we approve a proposal or put it on the board agenda in March to satisfy the board's, you know, worries?
Well, they said two things in the proposal that you guys sent over today that were in, directly contrasted what they said to us sitting, standing in front of us, which was we asked, would they help us with campaign materials? And they said absolutely. The marketing woman stood there and said she would. Yet in their proposal, it absolutely says they will not, and do not. It does say it.
I
For sure. And then they made a comment about how it would be something additional if we wanted them to do any kind of renderings and things like that, which is something we had asked for, that we needed people to see. And they told us, had gotten standing, that they would do that, and then said that something additional, that'd be additional work to do that. So that, that also bothers me, because those, there were questions that we asked, and they responded that they would do those things, and now we're saying something opposite in the proposal.
Not, like, I understand how you could come to that conclusion. No firm can engage in political activity.
I understand that.
And that's, that's the line that they're drawing, is it's not that
I understand that, because I do say that.
They will prepare campaign materials that are neutral, what they're not going to do, and they might do things at the request of the political campaign, they're not doing it at the board's request. And so that provision protects both parties to make sure we're not crossing over a legal line.
I understand.
They will do cost estimating, they're not going to do a detailed cost estimate, which is what you would normally get, they would do during the construction project when drawings are there to be estimated.
Right.
That's the line. They're, you're going to get an estimate, and you're going to get renderings and a floor, whatever you want in terms of drawings, short of a design document, which is something that you could hand a contractor and say, bill.
No one asks for that.
They're not going to give you a design document, but they will give you, if you want a rendering, we can write in, how many renderings would you like? They will do that. It is, I do not believe they have misrepresented themselves orally, or that the written contract is a change from what they said orally. They will do exactly what they said orally, and I don't see anything in the written contract that leads me to believe that they're baiting and switching in any way. They're just clarifying that you're not going to get a 50-page estimate, which you will get during the construction project. That's the line they're drawing.
I don't know what any of the board members think, Jennifer. I mean, like, I, I've said what I feel like I needed to say, and
I want to, again, kind of remind everybody of the chronology of what did happen, at least what I know. I have not been involved actively in what TDA's been doing since the board acted, I think on January 8th. I called them January 9th, which was the Wednesday. We had a kickoff meeting Friday afternoon. Everyone understood the urgency, and they have been working to validate, and I think they're ready, I think they're ready to present the work that they've done so far.
We scheduled January 30th for them to come out and do the building assessment of the high school, and what needs, you know, what needs replaced and all that stuff. They, that got canceled because of the cold weather days. We rescheduled for February 8th. They came out February 8th, we had our main director, director of operations here, we went through, you know, how old's the roof, when's the HVAC been updated, when have windows been replaced? We went through all that kind of building envelope type of things, and then they went back and started their cost estimating, and they, they have that ready, and they want to meet with us either the 4th or the 5th with the administration. And then from there, we were going to present to the board what, what they came out with.
And that's one of the reasons that took longer to schedule, is they're trying to coordinate the OSFC, the district's in the expedited local partnership program with the state. So they wanted to get out what's called the Regional Planning Coordinator, which I assume Jeff Docerman
Jeff Docerman.
See there on the 8th? He's the OSFC's designee, and you want to make sure the commission is there and approving of whatever you're doing, so you get full credit later on. So that's why from January 10th, the meeting was January 31st or 30th to do the walkthrough, was you're trying to accommodate somebody else's schedule.
But even, again, even at all that, to me, that doesn't negate the fact that we should have had a contract.
That's, you can't make that, sure. If you want to say they didn't get a contract sooner, terminate them. You know, they didn't. They did do the work, or they done, yeah. Again, you could make whatever judgment you want to make.
We saw, we have another validation meeting scheduled with them on, what, March 5th?
They're going for the 5th, 10:30. Just got emailed this evening about it. Yeah, March 5th at 10:30.
Yeah. I guess, I, I mean, I don't see anything that, the contract may not have been delivered, but I haven't seen them dragging their feet necessarily in doing it. I, you know, the, things could have been accelerated by a week if it hadn't been for the bad weather on the 30th. I mean, there, I, I get it, you, there are, my assessment is that, that most of us thought it was fairly even, and we went one way and not the other, but I, you definitely have stronger feelings than, than the other members of the board.
I do. And that's, and whatever, we continue with them, that's, I don't have an issue with that either. I just, my feelings are more based on the history we have already with the current architect, and I had an expectation that, we all believed that when we asked how long it would take to get a contract, David said three to four days, and now it's, it's been like six weeks since then. And that, to me, is concerning. We did ask at the meeting how long it would take, and it's significantly different than the time we were told. And that, that's really my only concern, quite honestly. The rest of it, I don't have a concern about their ability to do work, it's just how it reflects the kind of attention they are going to give, and what the expectation we have.
Okay. You know, I hear you, I, I mean, I, it is a judgment. The bottom line is that they have, I don't know, I don't see a, what's the word I'm looking for? Action for cause at this point? I just, I don't. Is it perfect? The answer is no. I'm not sure that I see an act for cause here. And Jack, I, you know, there are certainly four of us here.
Well, I'm, I'm of the belief that we should give them one more shot, but I'm going to say this. They've already took my, where I was at to the limits, because I was kind of leaning the other way anyhow, and I came along for the ride, and, which is fine, they were both very good companies, but I don't, and I would hate to see any other slowdowns or not meeting our needs.
So I, I've asked for part of the contract. I've asked to have included a list of, like, action steps and when, dates of when, when we can expect to have certain things so that we have at least as part of the contract of something that, you know, barring unforeseen circumstances, obviously, but something that we can hold somebody accountable to say, like, we're supposed to meet these deadlines. We need to meet these. And as a board, we need to meet these.
They want to give us a bunch of deadlines and they're not holding up there.
So, so I'm asking that to be included as, at least an addendum as part of the contract that we see when we, if we're going to agree to something with them. I mean...
I agree.
I think there were some dates in the proposal. I didn't have time to look up. And I did have a brief conversation with Chris Smith and they're going to generate that. Should have it in the next day. I can't imagine it'll take longer than that.
Right. Because I would, I would like to know what we should be expecting on certain milestones that we need to hit.
Does the board want the proposal before the 19th, to vote on it in a special meeting?
I would like to have that.
You don't want to give them a window of time to see if they indeed do what they say they're going to do in the contract or the proposal? I can go either way with it. I just figure...
Well, they've already had six weeks.
Right. They already have all this time. I feel like we should be able to move forward with that.
But, yeah, they give us the proposal and we sign it. We're with them. That's the point.
But we don't have to sign it either. We don't.
No. That's what I mean. If you go to the, the 19th, you might be able to make a decision based upon what you see that they do in the next couple of weeks.
I don't want to drag, I don't want to drag our feelings.
But I don't think it's going to change what they do. They're still going to continue to do what they're going to do. Between now and, and, and special meeting in, in March or March 19th, they're going to continue to do the same type of work.
Well, I would agree. But at the end of the day, I feel like we, we owe a contract to them. We owe a contract to the public. We owe a contract to ourselves. I mean, at the end of the day, we shouldn't be doing work with somebody if we don't have a contract signed. So let's get one. Let's read it. Let's evaluate it. Let's make that decision. I would have liked to have done it a month ago.
Can we get one? I mean, get ready, you know, what, soon as possible?
Yeah. I'm just, my day tomorrow, I have, I have a window of time in the after, I mean, we have the basis of it. I, I saw there was an email. I didn't have a chance to look at what your email said.
It was the concern that you mentioned before about the fact that we believe that in the presentation, they said they would help us with any type of bond initiative that we might have. And now in, in the language, it doesn't appear that they're real clear on that.
They, they will do what the law permits them to do. The, the language that they drafted is excluding advocacy, which you are not permitted to hire people to. You can't use public dollars to get people...
I don't do that.
That's the line they're trying to draw. I, you know, will you get graphics that you can use or whatever? Yes. Will you get factual information on the levy? Yes. And we can clarify those things. You're not going to get a piece that says, "Vote yes on levy 27," or whatever the number is.
Right. And that's not what I was asking for.
Well, that's, it might be an artful, but that's what they're excluding. That was, that's their intent.
Right.
I mean, they, they help school districts with this. They, they do this work for school districts all the time. They will, you will get what you need. And if the levy campaign needs something from them, the levy campaign can ask them and they can make that judgment.
Is it reasonable to think that we might have something that's viable in a week?
Oh, yeah. I mean, yes. I, I don't see any issues. I'm, I'm wide open for it. Part of the challenge the last couple of days, I was, I had got something from them, I want to say last week, and I was tied up Thursday and Friday and didn't look at it. I happened to be in a meeting with Chris today, looked at it. We had a couple of comments to clarify some things. I can add some clarifying comments to address the board president's issues. I don't think they're going to have an issue with it.
All right. As soon as we get it, we'll disseminate it to the board. You can take a look at it and then we'll come together and, and decide when we're going to do it.
The only thing I'm waiting on them from is, is to clarify schedule of activities to address the, the issue that Belinda raised. You know, what's, what are the date of deliverables?
Yeah, that would be nice.
Thank you.
Okay. Set for new business. All right. That takes us to Board of Education Committee and Liaison Report. So first one is Superintendent's Business Advisory. We have a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:00, 8:00.
8:00.
And that's up for that. Curriculum and Programming, Mr. Winer?
Curriculum and book programming, we did not have a meeting in the last month and the boosters did not meet in the last month. The boosters will be meeting next month and so will the curriculum.
When I saw boosters, I saw, posted to the, when is the egg hunt? I saw just about...
April 13.
Saturday, April 13.
Maybe we'll have nice weather.
Well, I should have said, "Really?" Two years ago it was nice.
Yeah.
Using the stadium again?
Mm-hmm.
That's it? Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Finance Audit, Personnel, Strategic Plan, Mrs. Price?
Finance Audit and Personnel haven't had a meeting in the last month. We don't have one scheduled, but I think we were waiting to see what was going to be happening with the, with our bond information. So I guess we'll schedule one soon. Nothing really is going on. And then Strategic Plan, we have, again, I have, I have nothing to report on the Strategic Plan.
Buildings and Grounds, Ms. Price?
So as I mentioned, we did have a Buildings and Grounds meeting. I'm trying to find the date mine.
20. February 20.
Thank you. And so we, we did discuss a lot. We, we had a conversation, as you heard, concerning the, the new buildings. But we also talked a lot about some things going on with the bleachers, for the, for the band. And I think we're making some good progress there. We talked about...
What's the update?
I'm going to actually turn the floor over to Mr. Weiner because there might be more of an update. But it's, it is, if you look at the, that one picture in the back, which I know people were maybe listening and can't see that, but it's going to be in the corner in the center. It's kind of behind the, the scoreboard. There's going to be some excavation, a creation of a...
Kind of the hills at the suspect there?
Yep, yep. There would be creation of a, of a cement pad and then the bleachers would be permanently installed there. And Mr. Weiner, I'm going to give you the floor in just a minute, or just a moment, just to get any more updates you might have. We also are looking at the possibility of, of providing air conditioning to, to Buckeye and Melridge. That work is ongoing. The three of us, the third being Mr. Miley and Mr. Weiner are going to take a tour of the, of the elementary schools the week of March 4th and just to see what, what the, the options might be. Additionally, we did talk about some of the things that we might be able to salvage from the buildings that are going offline. And it seemed like one of the, the biggest opportunities were to, to move some unit events from, from, from Hill Road. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Madison Avenue.
From Madison, yep. See, for my notes, Madison Avenue over into the Lemoes.
Which I knew, you know, that could cost, what, around $35, $4,000 down there?
Correct.
Before you start, in terms of the nuts and bolts, I'm going to turn it over to Dan as well. But I want the board to know on behalf of the board, I signed a contract, Gary and I, with CT Consultants for the amount of $10,200 to help us design the vestibule at Buckeye, Melridge, also the bleacher project. And lower on the priority list, but still included in that amount is making the lecture room possibly more useful than what it is right now. So that one's on the, on the lower end of it because we want to make sure that the vestibules are completed before the start of the school year.
Mr. Weiner, any updates on, certainly on the bleachers and some of the other things?
Yes. I've got a quote that came in on the bleachers, which I shared at the Buildings and Grounds. It will seek 288 band members, which is going to be more than what is needed. We're looking at about 275. So it's going to allow for some growth. Spoke with Mr. Kalis. We're also looking at a cement slab. Again, we're going to look at the rendering that we get. But we want to be able, so the band can set up tables and have for picnic items, Pepsi, wherever they have. Merritt, I met with Jeff Merritt and he walked out on our property. And as he always says, "Piece of cake, don't worry about it." So, you know, I trust those guys and I'm going to bring them in. It's a six to eight week timeframe on the bleachers that they can bring them in from the company after they have them made, I guess. And then they'll bring them in and there's also an installation fee. So I'd want to get that pad done. Jeff wants to be able to get in in June, once we find out exactly the size and also what we want to add into this band bleacher section.
It's right where, right where the 100-meter runoff is, where the track is, set a loop and you go straight. It's up a hill, which is elevated, maybe what, about four feet, five feet?
Yep.
And there's a notch in, in the area with a fence, fencing. And we're going to take that out and push it back and put the pad up there. And we'll give them enough room to, yeah, to be hospitable with the other band if they need to be, you know, I know, during games, they do that sort of thing. They eat up there and everything else, but they can be seen by everybody. I don't want to say they're out of the way, but you're going to be able to hear them up on the hill. But they won't be in the D section. It won't be impeding anyone's view that wants us to sit by and stand by the fence to watch a football game.
And they're, have they, have they been, yeah, you've like talked to them?
There's a couple of things that we're looking at that are a little bit different. They wanted, I think, a bleacher that was 15 high and it was a little too high, I, I thought. So we're going to bring it down, but make it a little bit wider. I know we don't want it too wide where they can't conduct, but I don't think it's going to be that much.
11 rows.
Yeah. And I think the last one was what, 10?
Yes. So we're just a, a row higher. It's going to give us some more students, something that we're comfortable with. And then we'll, you know, like I said, once we find out exactly the size and everything, Jeff and his crew will come in and get at it.
Considering that, the first year, we spent $6,000 to $7,000 on rentals. The rentals weren't that good. And they impeded and they, they didn't match. And then that was with four home games. Then I think we had six home games. It was $10,000, right?
Yes.
So when we got the estimate on this too, it's a lot lower than what we thought would make it.
It's 40, is it? $40,000?
Right in that ballpark.
Yeah. So, so we're talking a break even, you know, approximately 40.
And I think too, it was a $7,000. They want to know if I want it installed. I went, "Absolutely."
Right.
Yeah. So, so just, so people who might be listening in, this is, this is really important. The, the football, the, the weekend, starting the weekend out on a Friday night in the fall, the, the band is an integral part of it. We, we have jockeyed around trying to figure out how to situate them on the, on the, the all, all, all-weather turf that we've got. And, and this is the, the best option. Are we going to have to spend some money? The answer is yes. But, but I think it provides a permanent home. I think the elevation actually makes them more prominent and perhaps even will help with acoustics. And it keeps them as part of everything. So I, I think it's truly the, the, the best match all around. And it allows, and the one thing that was of issue in the old scenario was the bleachers were permanently installed. And, and there was probably, you know, almost 20% of the track you couldn't see. So now that's been eliminated. So you can see the track all the way around. It's going to help the, the track team. It's going to, you know, it's just that it'll move all the way around.
It's going to be the best situation for our district. And there's a, there's about an eight-week time. So at some point, I will be coming to the board, asking permission to order these bleachers, get them going, once I hear from CT Consultants.
We also have several aisles. It's not just one sub-bleacher from climbing over with instructions.
Those are permanent, right? Those are like permanently installed?
Yeah, they're, they're going to be their permanent structures. We're not going to, there's a wheel kit that you can get, pull them in and out, not doing it. It's just, it's, it's too dangerous on that track. Once we get in there, I want to...
There's also some discussion about, well, how do you get down the, the four-foot embankment? Well, there is either going to be stairs or a ramp to another concrete pad, a small one, where they can walk safely down without slipping in of the wet grass.
Yeah. But it's a good move for the regiment, I think.
It's going to be, it's going to be good for everybody. I'm going to let the company know, looking at the board right now, and tell the rental company, he's been asking me for a, "Do we want them or not?" I'm going to tell them that we don't want them and that we're going to look to move forward.
Great.
And that, that would have permanent egress, ingress and egress, like from wherever they have to get on and off the field?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? Like...
It'll be where that pad is and they'll walk back out.
Oh, okay. It's like not on the grass, like...
And they'll have a, the band will have a great view of the field. There's no obstruction because we had looked at another spot scoreboard, which was in the way. So I, I think everybody will be happy.
I'm assuming that's what, we don't have a design yet, but that's the only way you can get up and down is through either a ramp or a, a couple of steps. We don't want kids trying to walk up a bank, an embankment with gray wet grass.
Right.
So that's something that we hope we have from CT. I can get it to Jeff Merritt, get the bleachers ordered, get them made and get them in and start digging.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm sure they'll be happy.
Yep, absolutely.
I do have an update on the air conditioning.
Oh, please. I'm sorry.
If you'd like to. I looked at the, we looked at the money for what it would take to put in central air conditioning in both buildings and it's extraordinarily high. So I'm looking at another option right now, which would be for cooling the classrooms. I think it's going to be substantially less than the figures I brought in to Buildings and Grounds. You had asked me to look at other avenues. We have, I should have those quotes hopefully next week. And then that would look to do not hallways or any areas like that, but it would get into the classrooms at both Buckeye and Melridge.
That's good. Thank you, Mr. Weiner. Thank you, Mr. Kalis. The other thing, the Alumni Association did have a meeting in February. They're updating their, their bylaws. So they, the board, their board will approve it. And then ultimately, we need to approve it as well. So we've seen those come our way. I'm not sure if it's going to be in, in March or in April, but, but relatively soon. And they also have 22 applications that they are evaluating for the Hall of Fame. So some of them, some of them are rollover from last year. I think you're in the, in the pipeline for two or three years. But they got, as I understand it, 16 new applications. And we, you know, looking at the Hall of Fame, especially this last crop, wow. We've got some really, some really impressive alumni.
Great.
This would be, this would be good. Their next meeting is, is March, Monday, March 11th at 7:00 PM. And they meet here in the, in the room, in the board conference room. That's, that's my report. Thank you.
The Alumni Committee has really stepped up their game recently in the past year or two. They've, like, very impressive.
Great. Policy and legislative, Mr. Jeffries is not here. I remind him who else is on policy. Belinda?
We did not have a meeting since our last meeting.
We received a dis-society, too.
Right. Okay. You guys have to vet those first, correct? And then you'll send those to us. All right.
Great. All right. That takes us to the Superintendent's report.
Okay. One thing, I, I had a discussion with Gary about maybe presenting again some of the information that we talked about at our work session. I know work session's a public meeting, but we don't have our cable channel here. So I don't know if we're going to touch on any of it today or not. But we thought it's a great thing to talk about the savings that we're going to realize by closing the two buildings. And I think it's important that the public know. We can talk about some of the redistricting. We have time, obviously. Everyone knows now that we've been, it's been redistrict. We sent it out February 12th, two weeks ago today. And at least on my end, it's been pretty smooth. I know that the Transportation Department did receive some calls, but those were more for clarification. There were 600 roads or so. We left a couple off, but we have those on there and we have an accurate list. So we really didn't receive as many calls as we thought we would in central office, to be perfectly honest with you. We were kind of bracing ourselves because of this change. And sometimes we get a lot of change. But things seem to be moving pretty smoothly, knock on wood. And hopefully it'll continue that way. We're currently working on classified assignments as well. In as much as we reassigned our certified staff, we also need now to look at where we're going to place our custodians, our secretaries, our food service employees, health aides. And we're trying to do that in a manner that's going to put people in the best places we can put them. So we're moving ahead. I also wanted to mention, we had Leroy was, was closed because of the power outage on Monday. I wanted the board to understand that Leroy actually had the generator, was working. We had heat. We had limited light. We had limited access to some of the kitchen equipment. But I decided to cancel school because I look at the generator as like a, an emergency type of situation. If kids are already in school and the, the generator kicks down, at least we can finish out the day. I didn't want them going into a, a school that had limited power. So that's one of the reasons why I canceled it. I tried to do it earlier than later as well, as people were preparing for the day.
That was an early call?
It was, it was. We, we talked about it the night before and wanted to, just to make sure we had like a drop dead time to call. But it, it, again, it goes back to having new buildings again. Leroy's always been a problem in bad weather. I, I believe a few years back, talking to the last Director of Maintenance, he told me that there's a power line that comes into that school. It's like 12 miles out. And if something falls on that line, it takes Leroy out. And Leroy seems to be the school that if there's going to be a power outage, it's Leroy. The generator has worked for us, which is nice. But at this point, I, I decided to cancel school. Which leads me into the other comment is we're going to look at possibly removing that generator as well, right?
Yep.
Couple other schools will also make that, do that audit, walking through and taking that thing out that we're going to do.
We're making that happen as far as getting quotes from our mechanical company to move a lot of our mechanical things to get a price because in the long run, it's going to be saving for the district.
We'll just move it somewhere else?
Correct. Yep. We've got a, one that looks like a spaceship at, at Hale Road downstairs. I'm serious. This beast is unbelievable. And our hope is to be able to take it to Riverside and it would help with our internet and freezer. It would just be a huge help force. So we're looking at it.
The other day, we had a meeting about... The other day, we had a meeting about our decommissioning parties at our schools. And you hit the next one. Nick ran the meeting and we're trying to get a grip on how this is going to look. And he did a lot of footwork, talking to other school districts and when they close schools, they have speakers and none of them had speakers. They want to come, they want to walk around, they want to go into old classrooms, they want to reminisce, they want to socialize with some light snacks and leave. And that's what we're going to do. So when I thought we would have a speaker, maybe a board speaker, myself, we're not going to do that.
So could you go back just so people who, I mean, hopefully they, they're looking online as well, but, but I, I want to make sure I have them correctly in my.
It was also in.
Yeah, I'm sure it's online and I probably just confirm online, but since it's here.
I'll pick up the. This was also printed. It wasn't changed, but then it was, it went out.
All right. Hopefully that helps somebody, helped me. Thank you.
And that's the purpose why we have that up there. Go to the next slide too, Nick, if you could. Nick also put out to people that if they have any old memorabilia, that they would send it to the district, sort of put it on display. And he's gotten some interest. There have been people that send all kinds of pictures to Nick and I have to sit through some of those and decide what we're going to put on in terms of display. But before we get to the pictures, he also posted on Facebook these events. And these are the stats so far as of what, February 19th?
Yeah.
Haddon has 109 going, 258 that are interested, 123 that were invited, for a total of 490 possible guests. Leroy had 101 going, 292 interested, 137 that were invited for 550. Madison, 115 that were going, 309 interested, 86 that were invited for 510. And Hale Road had 195 that were going, 421 that were interested, 155.
The parking should be a blast.
Well, that's the other thing. We're trying to get there all the ways to provide a shuttle. We're talking to Jim, like, maybe for Madison Avenue, running the shuttle from Riverside High School back and forth in, in the shuttle land on a certain time where they're not taking it all the way to the end, but maybe doing something like that and making it, you know, one of these types of events, the biggest turnoff is to want to go and just not being able to find a parking spot. So we're going to do what we can to try to accommodate everyone that might want to go. Some of the pictures. So this is one, this is from Leroy, 1931.
I swear. Some of those people look familiar in there. At first I didn't get that.
I guess I knew those myself. I guess we're all there, aren't we?
I just shouldn't tell the.
I like my pants.
At a boy first.
That's funny.
Innovation, we're not talking?
I need to add you though.
No. Originally I had, I had Belinda and John in one of these pictures. I thought, you know, I'll put the whole board in there, so, you know, it's kind of interesting. Like I said, 1931 and, and I know some of the old timers have been able to identify some of the people that ran these pictures, but yeah, I thought I had a little fun with it. Yeah, Hale Road, 1932.
This is Lieutenant Porter.
Right here, 1957. These are just random ones. There's more. I just thought I'd throw a couple in there. Madison Avenue, this is something I've never seen before. And I'm assuming because it's on Madison Avenue, that that may have existed before the 1928 building, which is, looks like a one-room schoolhouse. Madison, 1941.
Look at those glasses, they're huge.
And then I have some pictures with our new construction. This is actually a video. We, we went over there. They're folding up pancake on the second floor to this piece of the apartment. He's taking it to our innovation lab in library, media center. I took one of our facility committee members to see the school because he asked. And this is the other end of the. So the left is innovation lab, to the right is the media center. But he's got, the guy's got it going. I mean, it was amazing watching this, this fell work.
I was surprised too that you, that you have a tool, you have one, they actually were able to get those buildings now too.
Yeah, heaters. Chris Heasly has made mention very much about this being a masonry-type building and how solid it is. So I'm glad we decided to go in that direction. This is a part of the veneer right here. I didn't, I wasn't going to bring it up, but there was a curve in the wall and I was talking to Chris about they, they need to straighten it out, but that's not the reason why I have it up here. I'm going to go forward to see what it looked like.
I like the colors.
Yeah. And this is over at Concord. And I wanted to congratulate Raj, and I'm not sure if I can pronounce his name correctly.
I can't help you.
Regula.
I don't.
I apologize. I actually met him today.
He's looking right at you.
And he's, he's kind of a serious kid, but he's very good at spelling, very nice young man. He won the Lake County Spelling Bee and now he's moving on to the tri-county Spelling Bee, which I, what I understand it is Ashtabula, Lake and Geogah, right?
And they each send one student, so it's just the three of them for the speller.
And that's going to take place on March 6th at 9:30 AM in Kirtland, in the Kirtland City Hall Council chambers. Now, if he wins this, he goes to Washington.
So that, and when was the last, we, that was just a couple of years ago, like what, two years, three years ago? It's not been that long.
Yeah, because Logan is just.
He was in eighth grade, he's in 11th grade now, so.
I remember when we were negotiating at Lake Gary College, when we had some breakthroughs going online to see him.
Yes, that's when we were watching it.
That's how we were watching him.
And from what I understand too, the teachers, this team, they're working with Logan and Logan's going to help coach them.
That's awesome.
What they expect, so we want to congratulate him.
It's really exciting. I hope he does well.
Before I conclude my report, I know Melissa wanted to express some good news with the visit that we received from Teacher of the Year.
Yes, so yesterday, the Ohio Department of Education's Teacher of the Year visited Riverside. You may have seen some of it on social media, but if you don't, if you're not on Twitter, you probably didn't see everything that happened. But, so the Ohio Department of Education picks a Teacher of the Year every year. And in accepting that award, the teacher then agrees to come out of the classroom for a year and spends the year traveling around, finding good things about education, what's going on in the state. Well, he and Dr. Bassetich have gotten to be pretty good friends. They're working on some common things in Columbus. So Chris invited him to Riverside for the day. And yesterday, he was here for the entire day tweeting out all day about the wonderful things that go on here. So he was at Riverside in the morning at the bistro and he went to a couple of classrooms and then he went to Lamuth in the middle of the day and they did a panel discussion with him. So there was probably, actually Raj was one of the kids that, so about eight kids sat down and they asked him questions and he asked them questions. He's very engaging, super nice guy. And then he ended the day at Buckeye, where they were doing some kindness activities and just seeing their culture. And so he got to be in the cafeteria with the different classrooms that came in and out, doing some different activities. Great guy, great experience, great exposure for our district, just to get it out there. He had a really good time, he said. One interesting thing is there was, in the panel discussion, one of the questions to him was, did you ever think your path would take you here? You know what I mean? Like who thinks they're going to be the Teacher of the Year? So we talked a little bit about that. He's an art teacher in Olentangie. And, and he's, and then he flipped the question and he said to her, well, what about you? Where do you think your path will take you? And she completely deadpan, did not even think about it, said, I want to be a teacher and then I want to be a principal and then I want to be the Secretary of Education. And I was like, well, what do you know about that? I don't know anyone who's ever aspired to that position, but she wants to do that. And interestingly enough, Mr. Juravich, Jonathan Juravich is his name, texted the, the Ohio Superintendent and said, hey, I think there's someone you need to meet that attends Lamuth Middle School because someday she could be a force in education. So it's just things like that as we start to get more exposure, you know what I mean? And we, and Riverside gets out there. It's, it's just, it was just a pretty cool thing. Great guy, great experience, very fun day. Like I said, Dr. Bassetich and Rich Schmidt led him around all day and it was, it was really fun.
So they take the entire year?
They get the entire year.
Wow.
And that's all he does. He just goes around and sees cool things that are going on in education and shares them, talks to kids. He set up a hot chocolate bar for the teachers at Buckeye because that's like his thing. Ohio loves teachers and so he did that for them over there. And yeah, it just was, it was a great experience and we were lucky to have the opportunity.
How do they get nominated for that? I'm just curious.
I think, actually I looked because it's just open right now, or it is open right now.
Anybody.
Yeah, you can nominate anyone. And there's certain criteria, you know what I mean? Obviously that you have to meet and then an application form, so.
That's really cool.
Very cool.
Just two other things real quickly. I was invited to attend an award ceremony for Michael Douglas, who won the MLK, Michael Luther King Award, which is this Friday, March 1st, in, at Walsh University. Pete Leetzos and I are going to attend, so I will not be at the Gridiron, which I had planned on going to, but we have a representative that will be at the Gridiron.
I'll be there. I'm not going to Walsh.
Is it the evening?
It is. It's at 6:00, the award is at 6:00, the award ceremony. And I just want to remind the board, as you know, I'm an exchange club member, a pencil exchange club, and we're having our annual pancake breakfast. That will be this Sunday, March 3rd, from 8:00 to 1:00. Proceeds go to scholarships for area students. And if you don't have anything to do on Sunday, you can come over to the Fairport Harbor Senior Center for, since you've graduated or you were in elementary school 1931, you'll be the senior citizen.
Were you going to dress up like a pancake?
We still have the costume.
That's right. You guys.
We do have a pancake.
We did, yeah. Yeah, thoroughly, yeah.
I remember that now.
We could pass it on to you.
I did wear it, didn't I?
I feel like you put it on for us at least. Yeah.
That's my better judgment. I conclude my report.
Thank you. All right, treasures, pork please, Mr. Placo.
Okay, just have a couple of quick updates before we go into the slideshow and just kind of refresh what the building savings are. First up is just a state budget update. We're heading into a new state budget coming up on July 1st. With the new governor, the process starts a little bit later because the new governor has to get into the office and get things situated. So we're supposed to see a proposal from the governor by March 15th. Then from March 15th to April 30th, he'll go into the House for them to redo the budget and make any changes. Then the month of May goes to the Senate. And then in June, they reconcile the two versions and we'll come to a final budget, which gets approved by July 1st, which will start our funding for the next two years. I know there was Representatives Cuffin Patterson that were putting together a new formula for school funding. I'm not sure if that's going to be included in, in this by name budget or the next one. Right now, we're on, we're far on the guarantee, so I don't really expect any type of increase in funding, but we could be subject to a decrease, but we won't really know those details until later on this spring. Furniture bids for the new telemetry schools, there was some confusion with the bid packages, so the bidding date got extended to this past Friday. I just received the results today. They're about within what we expect them to be, but they're not, nothing's ready for, for the board to present to yet. Right now, the architect and the construction manager have to do a scope review. They have that scheduled for this Thursday, where they meet with the bidders and make sure that their bids include all the furniture that's supposed to be in there and make sure everything's clarified to finalize what that pricing is. And then we may need to have a special meeting sometime in early March. We're not sure yet. They're going to check to see if we need to have that special meeting to approve the furniture bids or if they wait until the next board meeting on the 19th. So we'll let you know as that comes out. Also on March 4th is when the district will, we have scheduled to sit down is to kind of review what the options are, because there are different packages we can choose from, you know, based on our needs. Also with the schools that are closing at the end of this year, Jennifer Felker, who is the superintendent for both the Lake and Geogah ESCs, they've been talking about Riverside and the buildings that are, you know, coming offline and might have some interest in Hale Road or Haddon. So we have a tour scheduled then on March 8th to see what we have to offer because they're looking at prospect, planning one of those buildings and, you know, and we're trying to work out a deal with us on that. But they just want to come see what we have to offer, just to see what's out there.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What was the organization?
The Lake County ESC, educational service.
I hope I didn't overstep my bounds, but I did tell her in the meeting that I saw her that we had no interest in renting it out and maintaining those buildings, that we, it's either you guys are.
It's all or nothing. They're looking at it for ISTEM, correct?
Part of it is for ISTEM, part of it's for the ESC. We're required to offer it to ISTEM at market value, you know, but they want to take a look, see what it is, because obviously Haddon has much more value to it than Hale Road as, you know, as far as other development. But we haven't even gotten to that point. They just want to see what they are and start that conversation and it's just an avenue to explore.
Sure.
You know, they can always say, yeah, but we don't want to pay market value, wait till the auction, bid on an auction, we go to a public auction or we could possibly work out a deal, you know, if, if it comes to that. So be more on that as, as time goes on. It might just be, you know, take a tour and say, thanks, but no thanks. I don't know.
Do they bus students to ISTEM?
I think they do.
Well, we'd have to, but like, I know they're coming in from Geogah, like they're coming in from all over.
The home district, isn't it? The home district is responsible for training now.
I'm just curious because Hale, like, is far from some of the.
Well, there's not that many kids in it anyhow, is there?
Well, it's growing.
I don't know, I don't know what their enrollment is anymore, to be honest with you.
And then now I'm going to just kind of go through, these are the slides I presented that I packed on February 4th at our special meeting, but Lauren has to go through quickly, just kind of go through some of the highlights of that. We won't go into all the details as we get on the board, but just kind of a more quick summary, but it's the same presentation from that day. Basically looking at the savings from the new buildings, we have a reduction of administrator position, retirement for one of the principals, which there'll still be an extra principal that we're going to move to an assistant principal slash gifted coordinator position to better serve our gifted population and service to the larger populations at, it says Madison Concord, but obviously it's Riverview and Parkside. I hadn't updated the slides. So this is from the five-year forecast perspective, cost savings, $102,000 a year in salaries and $46,000 or so in benefits. Teaching positions with all the redistricting and consolidation, we're going to eliminate about nine and a half positions. Because we're implementing all-day kindergarten for next year, there's really only a net reduction of five positions. We have retirements, two retired, two Riverside teachers that are going to move into the preschool program. We have a couple retirements, one moving into the high school gym. So there's really, the net effect is no reduction in force. All the Riverside employees will maintain their positions and the five-year forecast savings, about $362,000 in personnel and 137 benefits basically from those retirements and shifting around to the preschool. And this is the more of a cost breakdown there. Food service, we will eliminate two kitchen manager positions as we only need one kitchen manager per building. manager per building. Ironically, we have two retirements at the end of the school year, so it works out nicely. There's not a reduction in force in that area as well. This has no effect on the five-year forecast, but we'll, you know, have a reduction in expenditures in our food service fund of about, you know, costs about $85,000.
And just to drive home that point, our food service is self-funded, so there's no, it's, so it supports itself, and we're good to go. Not every district can do that.
Right. It's more commonly, food service runs in a deficit, and the general fund has to transfer funds to offset that. Riverside, we run, we run well, we don't typically do that. And we don't anticipate any type of deficit at any time in the near future. For health aides, we have a reduction of two health aides. We contract the health aides through PSI. Those, that would affect the five-year forecast on the purchase services line, annual savings about $40,000 a year. Then for repairs, we did kind of an average of fiscal years 17, 16, and 15, because in this current FY18, and now, we're not really putting the money in the repairs, we're kind of keeping things warm, safe, and dry, so we felt we kept those out of the average. But just looking at the annual average of repairs, you know, anywhere between 20, you know, Hale, $6,000 a year, Madison up to $34,000. So about $100,000 a year in repairs that we spend. A lot of that will go away. There'll be some repairs in the new buildings, obviously, but not to that magnitude. So just adding up all those savings, they were talking about $873,000 a year in savings just from consolidating, and, you know.
And just to drive home the point, the annual bond that the residents of our district pays, about a million dollars a year, is that correct?
For the, are you talking for the bond issue?
Yes.
The, what it collects?
Yeah.
It's at, it's like a 1.5, it's at down to 1.57 mil, so it's about one and a half million a year is what it collects right now.
So that's, so basically, through all the consolidations and other things, it's, a lot of that is made up in this particular phase of the buildings.
And none of it's in the five-year forecast, right? Like, with all these savings, we didn't put that in the five-year forecast.
We didn't, because at the time, we didn't know what they truly looked like, so a lot of that was not factored into the five-year.
Right. So when we had a good five-year forecast to begin with, we'll have an even better one.
Yes, they do improve.
One of the considerations, although that might drag the savings down a little bit too, is the fact that we need more custodians in new buildings to bring back in the PM. And Jim, with his experience, he's found that you should have a custodian on every shift for every 25,000 square feet, or something like that, was about the average. We were thinking about starting with just two in the evening at our new buildings, which are $75,000, just to see how it goes. We've been spending a lot of overtime on custodial maintenance and also on mechanics, and we're to the point where, because it's become so regular, that we need to do a cost analysis to see if it just makes more sense to hire somebody and cut back on the overtime.
So what, like, one during the day and two in the evening?
Well, that's what we're looking at right now. I know Dan wanted a few more, but I thought that we might want to start with at least two in the evening and see how it works.
The big buildings.
We were also going to ask to increase the custodial hourly as well, because right now, I think it's 8:50.
For the summer seasonal workers?
Yeah.
We want, I would...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, it was seasonal workers, not the substitutes.
I was asking for 30 this year, based on the fact of cleaning the high school, Lammouth, rather quickly, so I can gear towards the move, because usually, I lose kids in August due to football ban, whatever it is. I'm going to try to hire some older kids that are going to be willing possibly to stay into August to help with the transition. But my, our goal is to make things happen as fast as possible in June and July with the moves, get kids working with a couple of our maintenance custodians, and work with Melissa on what has to be moved. So she's working diligently at that.
Well, yeah, I mean, between what she's kind of come up with in terms of moving with actual physical bins, and compare that to a professional mover doing all of this would be just astronomical. I mean, this is, this is really inexpensive compared to what it could be.
Well, credit where credit is due, that came from Mr. Halfa, because he's done this before, so he's been invaluable in trying to direct. So we are just the minions at this point, Marlo and I, as we move forward, trying to organize. But I just said to Jim and actually to Dan today, every time I go out into a building and start a conversation with a teacher, a new question comes up that I feel like we haven't thought about. Now, they have, but I have not, so it's, Dan was trying to lower my anxiety level as I start to say, "Okay, we thought about classrooms, what about bookrooms and storage rooms, and who's packing the library, and science bins, and..." Yes, then I needed to get the brown bag, and you can see how this is going.
It's kind of funny, because, you know, some of the teachers are asking, "Well, you know, I'd like to move this old bookcase that we've had here for a million years that was probably new in 1931." And we're telling them, "No, you can't. These are brand-new buildings. You know, we don't need that. We have our own casework and everything else." And maybe it is a time where they go through some of their stuff and get rid of the things that they're not using.
So, so, kind of talking along those lines of, you know, summer staff and whatever, I just want to ask the board what their feeling is on board members' children, again, applying for positions in summer maintenance and whatever, because we've had that issue in the past, where some people don't like it, whatever. I'm just, I'm just asking.
I have no issue with that.
So I have had an issue, and I would still vote against it, but we have a five-member
I'm just asking.
I don't see a problem with it, because it's temporary work, but...
Right.
Just if whoever, the relations with staff that are staying from...
Right, right. I just am asking, because...
I've always said that if the kids are really savvy, in the summer, we always have custodial of people using vacation time, that the difference between 8:50 an hour as a summer worker, you could work for $10 an hour as a substitute and work every day, do the same type of work.
I've had a lot of kids that come back, been here a couple of years, and the 8:50 rate for right now for them, I think, is too low. It's been at that rate since I've been running the summer program, and I think it'd be nice if we could bump them to, for a dollar an hour to 9:50.
And the other, again, the only reason I'm asking is because, like, quite frankly, I have kids who would apply for those jobs, but I, like, I always tell them, "Don't bother."
You know, and I'm going to be honest, my numbers have dropped, where I used to have maybe 10 to 15 kids that we didn't hire, and it was always a tough procedure for me. But last year, I noticed a drop-off of kids that wanted to come into the program, so I'm hoping this dollar an hour is going to help, and hopefully, I get some older kids that will stay into August, so we can have the manpower.
All right. Going back to the slides, here's some other considerations. These don't have any cost figures with it, just some other notes that are worthy here. We're going to maintain all the secretary positions with the two new buildings having two secretaries each due to the larger populations. Obviously, I maintain all custodians, but we're looking at possibly increasing that, offsetting some of the overtime that we pay now. Haddon Crossing Guard, that's currently vacant, that position will remain vacant going into next year. There might be potential reduction of lunchroom assistants and playground assistants, and also a reduction of latchkey employees, which would affect the latchkey fund 20. A couple of other things, there's less mileage expense and time travel between buildings. We have some teachers that travel between buildings throughout the day. We will still have some of that, I think, next year, but not as much as we have in the past. Plumbing contract may decrease, because there's less buildings to go to, depending if we have to plow, if we have the old buildings, we may have to plow some of those for a time, but, you know, when we get it down in the summer, we'll see, hopefully, some cost savings there. Property insurance will probably increase. I'm not really sure what that will look like. We get those quotes later this spring, going into June. Utilities will probably won't decrease as well, just because of better technology and air conditioning in the new buildings, so they'll be more energy efficient, but they'll also be using more energy just because of the technology and air conditioning. And they will keep the buildings' budget about, remain about level, based on like an allocation per student. And then, just some other things, we'll be able to maintain better balance of students and class sizes, keep us running more efficient that way, instead of having six smaller buildings. With all the kindergarten coming on, we'll have less, a reduction in midday transportation routes, because right now, it's about 10 or 11, one-hour routes in the middle of the day, which are typically, you know, bid on by the higher-paid drivers. We'll have some payroll efficiencies, a lot of less time sheets with less routes in the middle of the day. And also, minimal no unemployment expense, because there's not really a staffing reduction, it's just two retirements and moving people around, we don't have a true reduction in force, so we should have minimal unemployment expense from that. And that, to follow ahead on that, anybody have any questions or anything?
Sounds good.
No, it took me back to that, to something you said in your superintendent's report, and I saw that about the, something about the classified staff. Are we looking at, I know that, I was copied an email from a parent that I had a concern about, like, which nurses are going to be going to which buildings and things like that, based on history with kids. Like, how, are we looking at some of those things as far as assigning?
We are, but a lot of times, it's not only one building, there's like another building too, that could have the same type of issues.
Yeah, I know, until I was just curious.
Yeah, we are. I mean, if things are all the same, and there's like a delicate type of health issue, we'll consider it. I just, I received, I think, one of those emails as well, and I just said, "At this point, we'll keep them where they are unless we finally need to move them." There are even some cases where, in the past, we've always, years ago, we used to have nurses in every building, this is a long time ago. We negotiated that away, and we have one nurse district-wide, and the rest are contracted out through PSI. The problem with PSI is they don't pay their health aides very much, and when they get better offers somewhere else, they seem to leave, and they're very transient a lot of times. But there are cases, again, in certain buildings, I think Lammouth is one of them, where we actually have another nurse there because of the health issues that are, a number of health issues. But contractually, we really are, there's only the need for one, but there's some kids that are out there with as many as we have that need extra attention.
Right.
So to answer your question, yes, we'll look at it if there's a need to do so.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Placko?
That's all hit.
All right. It takes us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Nobody's got anything, and that will move us on to a consent agenda. Consent agenda provides for more efficient use of time. Any board member can remove a consent agenda item to be discussed and voted on individually. The first thing up is finance and audit.
Yes, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the finance audit consent agenda as recommended by the treasurer, items A through I. Do we have a second?
A second.
First, I just want to thank the folks who have donated money, Dworkin and Bernstein to Project Lead the Way, Riverside RBI Club to the Riverside Baseball, Jennifer Welch to Hale Road Elementary School, and the Pennak family to Riverside Veterans Wall of Honor. Thank you to them. And then I just had a question on the financial statement compilation, is it 2021?
Yes.
Like, already? Like, I didn't know if that was a typo.
Yeah, it really is for 2021, the auditor state, they've changed the auditor this year, and they reached out, and we were on the contract through 2020, we did the financial statement compilation.
Is that like an extension?
Yeah, it's an extension by one year, locking in at this year's rate, so I said we were happy with our services for that, so.
I thought maybe it was a typo. Jeez, that's like two years from now, but okay. Awesome.
Otherwise, we might have a cost increase if we can prove it.
Does anybody have any other, is there any other discussion?
No, just thank you to those groups for their donations.
And if there's nothing else, can you call the roll?
Lynn Degrassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Motion carried. Personnel?
We have the consent agenda items A through B, the personals. Do I have a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion on names? No? Then can we call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi?
Aye.
Motion carried. Curriculum and programming?
Okay, motion to approve the items listed on the curriculum and programming consent agenda as recommended by the superintendent, day through C.
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion or any questions?
Where is Tiffin? I should know this. Is that like...
West.
West, by like Finley and out that way.
Like, what do they offer as far as college credit plus for kids who go, like...
They have a good college there.
I know, I'm just, I'm just asking, like, that's so far. Does anybody go there?
We have one student.
We probably do. Oh, I was going to say, you probably do online.
Online?
Yeah, that's what prompted the agreement with Tiffin, we have one student that's attending
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, roll, please.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Jack Miley?
Aye.
Lynn Degrassi?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Motion carried. Buildings and grounds?
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds, consent agenda items A through G, is recommended by the superintendent. Can you have a second, please?
A second.
Mr. Degrassi? Any discussion?
These are all the items that they talked about in their last meeting, correct? All these...
The change orders?
Net ops and all.
Basically, we have the SRO agreement, basically memorializing the agreement with the sheriff's office, that's required by, I think it's hospital, 491, clarify that, so we put an official agreement in place, the two agreements for presidios for the home system installation.
And that's what they were talking about in our last meeting, correct?
Then there's another one, the fiber line installation, internet access at the new buildings, that goes through LGCA, which is our IC site, and then the two change orders, basically, so from fire line plan changes at, I guess, Parkview and Parkside at Riverview.
Now, I have a question about the change orders.
Yes.
Is this because the plans weren't correct from the beginning, or changing equipment, or...
It's, I don't know, all the specific details, but basically, when the Paintwell Township and Concord Township Fire Department review the plans, they have review comments based on each township's individual, you know, requirements, and then they review those with the architect, then the architect issues what's called proposal requests to make any changes based on those reviews, and, you know, it's not necessarily incorrect, it's probably just clarification of things, or things that the fire department requested for safety,